We're just going to get ready to start this wonderful panel. My name is Cian Wilson, I'll be moderating today's session. And just a little brief description here of our panel. This panel discussion will expand upon the ideas brought forth during the Do Black Lives Matter panel at the OHTN conference this past November of 2016, and many of the conversations that have been sparked here at the CAR conference amongst the ACB contingent. This panel will provide critical perspectives to advance the understanding of the HIV epidemic in our ACB communities. So I have the privilege, the great privilege, of introducing this wonderful panel of speakers. And our first speaker is going to be Dr. Omi Sarey Dryden, who is an interdisciplinary scholar, who explores how the history of racism and colonialism frame contemporary cultural understandings of blood, for example, healthy versus tainted blood, and how these understandings are produced with relationship to blackness and queer sexualities. Dr. Dryden also explores how these discourses shape the blood system in Canada, i.e. through the Canadian Blood Services and the donor questionnaire. Next to Dr. Omi Sarey Dryden is Dr. Idil Abdelaihi, who is an assistant professor at Ryerson University in the School of Social Work. Her research interests are grounded in the black radical tradition, anti-black racism, and black feminist thought, all of which are informed by the struggles and active resistance of black communities locally and internationally. She has written numerous peer-reviewed publications and book chapters centering themes such as anti-black Zionism, madness and anti-blackness, anti-oppressive organizational development, black studies in policy, poverty, and the advancement of black liberation at multiple intersections within the social services sector. Ms. Lana James is the Research Manager of the High Impact Field-Based Interventions Lab at St. Michael's Hospital in Toronto. Ms. James was the Executive Director of a community-based AIDS service organization where she was recognized for outstanding leadership and service by the United Way. Dr. Leo Wilton is a professor in the Department of Human Development in the College of Community and Public Affairs at the State University of New York in Benhampton, USA. Dr. Wilton's research examines sociostructural and cultural factors that provide the basis for the development of culturally grounded HIV prevention interventions in black communities. And last but certainly not least, Dr. Ronaldo Walcott is an Associate Professor and Director of the Women and Gender Studies Institute at the University of Toronto. Ronaldo's research is centered in black diaspora and decolonial politics, as well as gender and sexuality studies. Dr. Walcott has authored works such as Black Diaspora Thagotry: Frames, Readings Limits, and The Long Emancipation Moving Toward Black Freedom. Without further ado, please give a big round of applause to this wonderful panel. [applause] Dr. Omi Sarey?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, thank you. I respectfully acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk and Agonquin First Nations. I also acknowledge the relationships, both contentious and cooperative, that occurred and continue to occur between indigenous people here and the enslaved indigenous people forcibly brought here. I also want to take this moment to acknowledge our collective ancestors, black, indigenous, queer, trans, genderqueer, two-spirit, and cis. Thank you to Dr. Cian Wilson for including me on this panel, and to the Hi-Fi Lab for making it possible for me to attend. Let me be clear, Black Lives Matter. As we know, the discourse around HIV and AIDS was and is framed within racist, anti-black racism, homophobic, sexphobic, science, scientific inquiry. It is important to note that what many considered to be cutting-edge science and resulting public health policies were fueled and are fueled and framed by racist and homophobic frameworks that are anti-black, heteronormative, and sexphobic. And by this I mean that it's anti-fucking. You know, the pleasure, the often rigorous fucking. It's anti-fucking. The transmission of HIV/AIDS and hepatitis C through blood donation contaminated the blood supply in many national blood systems with disastrous results. The intimate connection between HIV illness, tainted blood, and blood donation makes this discussion of blood systems vital. Today I wish to speak about how anti-black, in quotes, colorblind, public health, and EPI practices continue to link African Caribbean and black people and our blood with disease, specifically HIV and AIDS, and how these practices continue to frame African Caribbean and black people as a threat to the general public. My site of study is Canadian Blood Services and the national response to the tainted blood crisis. As my friend, colleague, and mentor, Dr. Ronaldo Walcott states, and I quote, "Attempts to place blackness outside the boundaries of what is imaginatively Canadian," and here I would add HIV and AIDS research, "is dangerous. Such attempts do not accord with the lived realities of black people across this country." End quote. Canadian Blood Services argues that its required donor questionnaire is specifically designed to effectively screen potential blood donors, allowing for a distinction to be made between donors who have blood that gives life and donors who have blood that brings death. Canadian Blood Services and the donor questionnaire, as we know, were established as a direct result and outcome of their recommendations from the Creever Commission's interrogations into Canada's HIV/AIDS tainted blood crisis. So the scope and the breadth of the questionnaire, and the questions on the questionnaire, it's necessary to look that, to note that each of these questions do not exist separately and distinctly from the other, that they actually work together as a unit. They hinge upon one another. They move and they talk about and relate to one another. It is a tapestry, creating what has come to be known as the ideal blood donor. So when, for example, we isolate one question, men, have you had sex with another man, in its various iterations, and we understand this one sole question as being a question that targets bisexual and gay men, we are, in fact, operating in a diminished capacity. The donor questionnaire, there are many questions on the donor questionnaire that impact and indicate sexuality and sexual identity. And the process of racialization, as we know, is also about sexual identity. Here we need to think about anti-miscegenation laws and the one-drop theory. These are sexual practices that came to identify racial identifications. So it's vital, therefore, to explore the targeting of African and black people, and that this is also about gay and queer life in Canada. And so I look at another question that's been on the donor questionnaire. Were you born in or have you lived in Africa? And have you had sexual contact with anyone who was born in or lived in Africa? Anti-blackness has a long and vibrant history in public health, public health policy, and medical intervention in Canada. So for example, the inception of the blood donation system in Canada, the first blood donor clinic was held in 1940, where blood was collected for military use. So all the blood that was collected went to the military. None of it was used for private use in hospitals. The first blood transfusion recipients were white American and British soldiers. And I note their race here, their ethno-racial origin here, because the blood that was collected in Canada was racially cataloged to make sure that white soldiers did not receive not-white blood. That whites, in the literature, it says that white soldiers did not receive the blood of Negroes. It's also important to note that between 1940 and 1942 in Canada, women who largely ran the clinics were not allowed to donate blood. So the blood donation system in Canada is deeply steeped in anti-blackness and a misogynist framework. And they speak about racial segregation from that moment. So this continual push for, to have gay blood included in the blood donor questionnaire, without complicating that identity to look at the realities of African and black people, really is framed within a white supremacist logic. Because what it does is it silences the realities of the way that queer and trans people are also excluded from blood in the donor questionnaire. And it frames an imagined idea of what safe blood looks like. And we need to ask, can we imagine safe HIV/AIDS blood that comes from black donors? Or is the blackness just much too queer for us to be able to understand how that can work? So why this question on Africa? So I get this, I get asked all the time, well, don't they test all the blood? So why do they have the donor questionnaire if they test all the blood? Canadian Blood Services has stated that they had this question on Africa, which now reads Cameroon and Togo, because they wanted to capture, they were unable, they did not have tests that captured the strain of HIVO. And that the strain of HIVO was geographically specific to Africa, all 54 countries. But what they denied, or what they refused to acknowledge, was that HIVO was also found in Europe, in North America, in Spain, in Brazil, in other locations. So if this really was about making sure that HIVO did not enter the blood system, then other countries would have been placed on the donor questionnaire, okay? So what is this scientific imagining, that we can say HIVO is really just about Africa, but not about these other countries where it also was present? The other racial, the other way that this question was racialized is when white donors answered yes to the question, yes, I was born in Africa, or yes, I've lived in Africa, they were told by clinic workers, upon occasion, that that question wasn't about them, that they should just answer no to that question. So again, we need to look at the efficacy and the usefulness of the donor questionnaire. The other note we need to realize is that in 2009, Canadian Blood Services did have a test for HIVO. But that question remained on the donor questionnaire until 2015, okay? Now we have questions on the donor questionnaire that target Togo and Cameroon. And the reason why we had those questions, according to Canadian Blood Services, is they want to make sure that if there are new strains of HIV, that they have a chance to develop a test for that. So what this means is that only new strains of HIV can come out of Africa. The scientific imagination does not allow for the fact that new strains of HIV can come out of North America, Toronto, Montreal, Ontario, Quebec. This is anti-black, this is anti-black racism. And what this does is it means that black people continue to be scienced into degradation. And our lives are impacted by this. Our black lives matter. So when I approached Canadian Blood Services about the anti-black racism that framed the donor questionnaire, and that's the blood system in Canada, they laughed. They laughed because they just couldn't imagine, ay, that black people exist in Canada as Canadian citizens, you know, that racism thing is just an American issue. You know, we have multiculturalism here. This can't possibly be what's going on. You do not have the expertise to make that decision about the Canadian blood system, right? Needless to say, I find this response troubling. And this brings me to this conference. This is my first CAR conference, and I was deeply disturbed by the anti-black racism that took place at the AGM. Not only in the ways in which diversifying the board has been unthought and unimagined, but also in the idea that as a research organization, that there are no black researchers who do viable and cutting-edge research in HIV and AIDS. I was disturbed that although the room was full, it emptied out quickly when we started to discuss the necessity for CAR to better represent the lives of Canadians, and yes, this includes African Caribbean and black people, gay, cis, trans, and genderqueer. I was disgusted that black people were dismissed as angry, aggressive, loud, abusive, and drunks, that if black people did need to be here, if we had to be seen, we definitely should not be heard. Seriously, the incoming president of the board made offensive comments to black people, all of us, all members, in good standing. Let me be clear, we demand an official apology from CAR, the incoming president, and the ED. We demand it today, and we demand that this apology, an apology without reservation, be posted to the CAR website. Do not get it twisted. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The title of the paper that I'm going to share with you today is called "The Misrecognition of HIV in the Black Experience." This comes out of a tradition, and I'm going to start with a quote from Carter G. Woodson. And this quote is from a very fundamental and seminal work, so if you haven't read it, you might want to peruse it. Carter G. Woodson says, "How we arrive at the present state of affairs can be understood only by studying the forces effective in the development. These things must be viewed in their historic setting. The conditions of today have been determined by what has taken place in the past. And in a careful study of this history, we may see more clearly the great theater of events in which the Negro has played a part." The term misrecognition here takes up the contemporary work of Melissa Harris Perry in Sister Citizen, and Carter G. Woodson's historic piece, The Miseducation of the Negro. Melissa Harris Perry describes what misrecognition is and how misrecognition operates, and why it is important in her book called Sister Citizen. I argue that Harris Perry's analytic of misrecognition is an apt lens suited for observing and interpreting many of the current theories, methodologies, and research processes of, quote, "scientific inquiry" that are currently used in HIV today. Harris Perry cites the work of Herman Witkin to establish the genealogy of recognition theorists that her work draws upon. Herman Witkin is credited with the identification of the field-dependent and field-independent constructs. During World War II, Witkin was intrigued by the fact that when some fighter pilots were flying long distances in thick clouds or fog, they could maintain their orientation and reference to the horizontal and the horizon. Others, however, became disoriented when they lost sight of the horizon. To the researchers of this phenomenon's surprise, some people could be tilted, they did some studies, and they created a room where the room could be crooked, the chair could be crooked. Some people could be tilted by as much as 35 degrees and report that they were perfectly straight, simply because they were aligned with the images that were equally tilted. But not everyone did this. Some managed to get themselves more or less upright regardless of how crooked the surrounding imagers were. Black people are standing in a crooked room where they have to figure out which way is up. Harris Perry's work identifies the tilted chair and the tilted room together, or separately function as vehicles and forces of anti-blackness prevailing against black people who are often read as non-human, both in day-to-day and in HIV research. Recognition of truth is the antidote to misrecognition. Jacques Pippin, a Canadian infectious disease physician, born and educated in Quebec, helps us understand how misrecognition was structured with regard to HIV and with regard to the black experience by retracing the facts, both quantitative and qualitative. This is the book. Feel free to read it. Pippin stated, quote, "Some may say that understanding the past is irrelevant. What really matters is the future. I disagree. There are at least two good reasons for attempting to elucidate the factors behind the emergence of the HIV pandemic. First, we have a moral obligation to the millions of human beings who have died or will die from this infection. Second, this tragedy was facilitated by, or even caused by, human interventions: colonization, urbanization, and probably well-intentioned public health campaigns. Hopefully, we can gain collective wisdom and humility that might help avoid provoking another such disaster in the coming decades." In 1989, Kimberle Crenshaw published the book titled, or the article titled, it was actually the book, then it came into an article, "Demarginalizing the Intersection of Race and Sex: A Black Feminist Critique of Anti-Discrimination Doctrine, Feminist Theory, and Anti-Racist Politics." Because Crenshaw's intervention focused on highlighting how black women are structurally disadvantaged in both the law and civil rights discourse, some scholars have marginalized intersectionality by assuming that the theory concerns only black women, or only race and gender, and by arguing that intersectionality conceptualizes those social categories in fixed and static ways. That's a quote from Devin Corbato. Crenshaw reminds us, however, that, quote, "It is erroneous to conceptualize intersectionality as a theory whose exclusive focus is the intersection of race," read non-white, "and gender," read non-male. Moreover, there are significant costs to doing so. Framing intersectionality as only about women of color gives masculinity, whiteness, and maleness in intersectional paths. That in turn leaves colorblind intersectionality, gender-blind intersectionality unnamed and uninterrogated, further naturalizing white male heterosexuality as the normative baseline against which the rest of us are intersectionally different." And that was by Corbato's. It is exposed, intersectionality has exposed how single-access thinking undermines legal thinking, disciplinary knowledge production, and struggles for social justice over the intervening decades. Intersectionality has proved to be a productive construct. Intersectionality insists on examining the dynamic differences in sameness played out and how they have a major role in function in what life looks like. Crenshaw also brings us to this concept of collective forgetting. And I would suggest here, strongly suggest, that the emergence of syndemics is about that collective forgetting. Syndemics has disappeared, absented, and erased the work of many black feminist scholars who fought to go into academic institutions and who fought to publish outside of them. For instance, the Combihe Collective, 1978 statement, Crenshaw's work in 1989, Patricia Hill Collins' work from '89 into the '90s and beyond. How are we to understand this erasure and convenient emergence of syndemics, and more importantly, its application to black life? I would suggest here that we might consider it's a bold manifestation of anti-blackness. To take up syndemics, to interpret or understand HIV in the lives of black people and on the African continent, or wherever we might be residing in the diaspora, is problematic. When we know that HIV is an outcome of European colonization, colonization that recognizes and requires the ongoing dehumanization and violent death of Africans, and the undoing of African ways of being, theories that are concerned with the survival and thriving of black folks must take up the truth. The truth is well-articulated by Christina Sharp in her book In the Wake: On Blackness and Being. She takes up this work in what she terms "wake work," described here, quote, "And though wake work is at least in part attentive to mourning, and the mourning that takes place on local and trans-local and global levels, and even as we know that mourning an event might be interminable, how does one mourn an interminable event? Just as wake work troubles mourning, so too do the wake and the wake work trouble the ways most museums, memorials take up trauma and memory. How do we memorialize an ongoing event, the afterlife of slavery?" She terms this period that we're living in, post-abolition proclamation, "the afterlife of slavery." Because how do we memorialize the everyday? How does one, in the words so often used by institutions, quote, "come to terms with," which usually moves past or get over, "the ongoing atrocity?" At stake, then, is to stay in the wake time, quote, "inhabiting a blackened consciousness that would rupture the structural silences produced and facilitated by, and that produce and facilitate, black social and physical death." Black people can be collectively punished for the actions of a single person. Simply having HIV could make everybody's black blood be tossed in the garbage. I argue that many of the current ways HIV research absence and disappears black life and the afterlife of slavery and wake work is fundamentally problematic and needs to be revisited. Christina Sharp leaves us with another thought. Contemporary black life is still marked by this corporate vulnerability. The myth, lies, and stereotypes perpetrated about any part of the race can have far-reaching emotional effects. Just as stories of courage and accomplishment induce pride, the stories of pathology and criminality induce shame. I leave you with this. We're here to talk about many things, and one of those things is about theories and finding a new way forward. I argue that no matter what we do, it's not, quote, "about supplication," it's about power. It's not about asking, it's about demanding. It's not about convincing those who are currently in power, it's about changing the very face of power itself. And I thank Kimberle Crenshaw for reminding of us that, because currently, we're working in the afterlife of slavery. Black lives matter, and we must all engage in wake work.
That's right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, I would like to engage us in some conversation around black sexualities, HIV, and human rights for same-gender practicing men in the African diaspora. And I would like to begin with Franz Fanon's words from Black Skinned White Mass. "Today, I believe in the possibility of love. That is why I endeavor to trace its imperfections, its perversions." So within this context today, as we approach the fourth decade of the onset of the AIDS epidemic, black same-gender practicing men's communities globally have experienced a substantial disproportionate HIV burden. Human rights violations based on race and sexuality-based discrimination, for example, for same-gender practicing men, remain commonplace in the African diaspora. Human rights violations may be manifested in multilayered contexts vis-à-vis structural disenfranchisement, such as laws that criminalize same-sex behavior, criminalize HIV, institutionalize practices that impede legal protections for black same-gender practicing men, racialized criminalization vis-à-vis mass incarceration, un-underemployment, school-to-prison pipeline, problematic deportation practices, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, just to name a few. When thinking about black same-gender practicing men's communities when it comes to examining the linkages between human rights and the AIDS epidemic, a key element in addressing HIV-related health inequities relates to the development of innovative models of prevention strategies that are grounded within cross-cutting geographic and culturally congruent contexts in black communities as one of the basic premises for this panel for discussion. The analytic probing of colonial frameworks is germane in understanding the nexus of structural violence and human rights considerations that are situated in broader systems of power and domination at the macro level. For example, economic, political, health systems, et cetera, for black same-gender practicing men's communities in the African diaspora. In particular, research has demonstrated that structural violence impacts global HIV-related health inequities, including human rights violations that facilitate HIV vulnerabilities among same-gender practicing men's communities in the African diaspora, racialized criminalization, discrimination, sexuality-based discrimination, inequalities, inadequate access to optimal health care, including primary and secondary HIV prevention services. At the same time, a critical component for integrating and addressing, for interrogating and addressing HIV-related inequities for black same-gender practicing men's communities involves the development and application of theoretical frameworks that are nested within culturally relevant conceptualization. A critical analytic framework for this research, based on theory, methodologies, and praxis, incorporates a connection to the intersection of racial, gender, sexuality, and social class politics, for example. I think we have an "shay" from the back.
Yes, yes, I do.
No, you stay right here, don't leave.
I love it.
You keep her here.
Keep it real, Black Lives Matter.
That's right.
In this context, a fundamental dimension of this work calls for a paradigm shift, then. A critical analytic framework for this research based on theory, methodologies, and praxis incorporates a connection to the intersection of racial, gender, sexuality, and social class politics, for example. I think we have an ashay from the back.
No, you stay right here. Don't leave.
I love it.
You keep her here.
Keep it real. Black Lives Matter.
That's right.
In this context, fundamental, a fundamental dimension of this work calls for a paradigm shift, then, that links human rights with an interdisciplinary and intersectional frameworks that coalesce within sociostructural factors that are relevant to the lived experiences of black same-gender practicing men at the ground level. Notably, interrogating structural inequalities vis-à-vis anti-black racism, for example, provides a framework to examine the multi-layered manifestations of structural violence as located in the everyday lived experiences of black same-gender practicing men's communities. The overarching theoretical construct of marginalization as articulated, for example, by several scholars, notably Cathy Cohen, a black political scientist, can be applied to HIV-related inequities. Building on the work of Cohen, these fundamental ideas provide a theoretical framework for addressing asymmetrical power relationships, that is, power inequalities in black communities, including those, and this is very important, that incorporates sociographical and political experiences of exclusion and marginalization based on race, ethnicity, gender, sexuality, social class, national origin, immigration status, just to name a few. Moreover, according to Cohen, a major component of these critical analyses pertains to the dualities of examining macro external processes and micro internal processes structures that have an impact on black communities in relation to articulations of HIV-related inequities for black same-gender practicing men's communities. For example, macro-level processes relate to marginalization associated with larger social structures, structural inequalities based on larger systems, legal, political, economic, educational structures, such as institutionalized racism, and some of the examples that I had given a few minutes ago. And micro-level processes relate to secondary marginalizations within black communities, for example, based on gender and sexuality, experiences of black cisgender women, trans men and women, same-gender practicing communities, et cetera, et cetera. Therefore, the integration of transformative discourses in addressing structural domains that provide intersectional analyses serve as fundamental interventions in the work of HIV prevention. As such, this scholarly work must be at the center of the discourse through incorporating critical, innovative, and transformative analyses that integrate and challenge hegemonic, Eurocentric, Western patriarchal, and hetero-normative discourses that pathologize black same-gender practicing men's communities. Building on intersectional theoretical approaches, an integral component to the study of HIV-related inequities in black same-gender men's communities is the incorporation and application of epistemological theoretical frameworks that speak to our experiences directly. And in closing, addressing human rights as a framework in understanding HIV-related healthcare delivery, for example, is vital for black same-gender practicing men's communities in the African diaspora. Healthcare delivery systems, for example, cannot be actualized without understanding the intricate underpinnings of addressing structural violence vis-à-vis anti-black racism, both structurally and in social practice in its broadest form, involving macro-level structures that produce structural inequalities, economic, legal, political, educational system, systems. A specific emphasis is placed on understanding the context of structural inequalities that facilitate multiple forms of exclusion and marginalization embedded within institutional structures and social practices. Healthcare delivery must be understood within this context of underlying structural causes of HIV and AIDS as a human rights framework from the standpoint of structural violence. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm hurting this morning, but it's okay. If I had to, this is a kind of a manifesto, like a footnote from a bigger paper. If I had to give my comments a title this morning, the title will go something like this. "Fuck Your Research: The Pleasure and Disgust of White Research Encounters With Black Queer Dick and Ass." How do black queer men fuck? Do we know? Do we really care? How can our research address these questions? How can our desires for HIV and its unfolding experiences be informed by these questions? Will white researchers ever really do the kinds of work on HIV that accounts for their deep psychic desires for black dick? Will they ever ask the kinds of questions and quite frankly, provide the kinds of research infrastructure that would seriously allow for grappling with their love and simultaneous repulsion for black cock? Let me be clear, then. Black gay men can research ourselves. People who are repulsed by how we fuck must move on. You can no longer build your careers by brokering us while we seroconvert and die. In short, we got this. Three to four decades into the epidemic, white research, yes, white research, we have to call it that, in HIV refuses to adequately address the question of how black queer men fuck. It's in part my contention that how we fuck remains a lacuna in the research because it implicates the deep love of whites, the deep love of white supremacist sexual desire and its complicated histories. So, many years after the deaths of Joseph Beam, Eses Hemphill, and Marlon Riggs, among countless, I'll name others, and I'm sure many in this room also don't know those that I just named, black queer men are still asking fundamental questions about our sex lives in HIV research. What this tells me is that white supremacist science continues to fail black people. The politics of the pair is no longer uplifting, and it must end. It is once again black exploitation, as all of my colleagues point to the afterlife of slavery. And today, we must suggest that new models are needed, they're needed now, they're needed today, they're needed yesterday. The infrastructure of HIV research continues to replicate all of the anti-black logics of North America and global culture in which black humanity is marked as depraved. To adequately account for how black queer men fuck, a fundamental shift in using the partial experience of the white world as the total or universal experience would have to occur. Indeed, while white investment in its own truths, as the only truth, continues to drag all of us to our deaths, sorry. Indeed, white investment in its own, in its own truths, as the only truth, continues to drag all of us to our deaths. Freud's death drive is app here because the fundamental untruth of white logics, which nonetheless polls as truth, is, is killing all of us, including white folks. This collective death drive can only be halted by, can only be halted by, as Fanon said, "making of us humans who always question." HIV research is nothing if it does not help ushering new ways of being human. And to do so would mean, would mean beginning with undoing its deeply ingrained anti-black logics. Thank you.